Further speakers? There being none, councillor Adams.
Look, Mr Chair, I'll just say that I thank councillor Sri for his feedback in the chambers because it wasn't forthcoming during the submission period because he didn't bother to put a submission in.
All right, I'll now put the report, all those in favour of the reports, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor McLaughlin, the Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded by councillor Huang with the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Mr Chair, just briefly, before I get to the committee report, there was a question asked to the Lord Mayor earlier by the councillor Tennyson Ward, who's not here in this place at the moment, but a question was along the lines of, will you advise to the Lord Mayor council's future long-term plans for and under the Offsley Road rail bridge? Now, Mr Chair, as you'd be aware, this is a state government asset. Council has endeavoured to seek the cooperation of the state in relation to doing work at this location, be happy to enter into a memorandum of understanding in relation to doing work there. Councillor Johnson has asked this question previously and has had answers along the same line, and I can quote from a letter from the Lord Mayor to, a recent letter from the Lord Mayor to a constituent on this issue, and I quote, "As per the previous letters to you from the former Lord Mayor, there remains no memorandum of understanding being proposed by the state despite council seeking one to get a better understanding of the state government's funding commitment, which at this stage appears to have no figure attached to it. This would enable council to progress investigations to the adjoining road network, so it is known which road and footpath upgrade requirements are needed between Martindale and Gerald Streets", end of quote. So just to answer that question that came from councillor Johnson earlier today to the Lord Mayor. Mr Chair, in relation to the Infrastructure Committee report last week, this was a presentation on the Player Street works that have been done, the Player Street connection, fantastic work that's been undertaken there. I don't propose to take up any more time of the council talking about Player Street because we have done, we have talked about this project before, certainly providing a great safety improvement on Kestles Road in particular, so council's done a fantastic job in consultation with the local councillor, who's provided great advice, councillor Huang, and I think that's a great outcome for all to see. There were some petitions, and I'll leave that to the debate of the chamber if need be.
Further speakers? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item A of the Infrastructure Committee report on the Player Street connection presentation. Mr Chair, last week's committee, the officer gave a comprehensive presentation on the delivery of the Player Street connection. I would like to once again thank all the people who have made this connection possible, especially our Lord Mayor, council adjutant Shrinna. I always remember that the then Infrastructure Chair, Amanda Cooper, and I, we tried countless times to get the state to contribute to this project that will make, that will make significant improvements to state's own Kestles Road, and we're getting nowhere. It was the Lord Mayor who gave us the support and decided to go ahead and deliver this important infrastructure, despite state level governments refusing to fund, co-fund the project, and their neglect, neglect of infrastructure investment in Brisbane. Well, I feel much better after I read an article in the Korea Mail yesterday about state's $4 billion backlog in infrastructure investment across the state, so they were not targeting it at us in Brisbane. It is just in the labour's DNA to neglect the infrastructure investments and have no plan for the future. Mr Chair, contrast to this neglect with team Shrinna's continued focus on delivering for the people of Brisbane with strong record of responsible financial management, the completed Player Street connection not only benefits the local residents, students, parents and teaching staff from Upper Mount Cravat State School, as well as all motorists along Kestles Road, it helps, helps them to get home quicker and safer. I just can't thank enough to those people who have contributed to the project, and I would like to conclude with a comment made by the president of Mount Cravat Ladies Bowling Club, who invited me to attend an awards presentation yesterday. The first sentence she told me when I arrived at the bowls club wasn't about the competition, wasn't about the awards presentation, it was, "The Player Street connection was so good." I commented the report to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Just briefly, to the committee report last week, as the local councillor that was actually, had carried with the neighbourhood plan, working through the Upper Mount Cravat Corridor neighbourhood plan, and as this being a vital connection needing, if we were going to be putting in the density that we see at the Principal Regional Activity Centre in Upper Mount Cravat, this is proof yet again that team Shrinna, and previously team Quirk, plan for the future. Density, where density should be, and infrastructure delivered to cater for that density, this is the prime example, and what the people on the opposite side of the chamber do not understand.
Further speakers? Councillor McLaughlin. I'll now put, put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. City Planning Committee, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move the report of the City Planning Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted.
Seconded, Mr Chairman.
It's been moved by councillor Burke, seconded by councillor Toomey, with the report of the City Planning Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Burke.
Mr Chairman, I've had a fair chat this afternoon about planning issues in the council chamber, and so there was only one item on the committee report from last week, and that was about bushfire planning and management with regards to planning scheme. All councillors would know that in 2014, as part of our city plan, we adopted a bushfire planning scheme policy and included overlay mapping in our planning scheme for the very first time. This is in direct response to changes by the state government, but indeed, the work that council has done to make sure our residents were informed and prepared and understood their bushfire risk across the city, Mr Chairman. The presentation last week went through a number of the key elements with regards to how the planning scheme policy works and the impacts that that change has made, and again, the officers gave quite a detailed presentation, and I provided at length some information to the council chamber in relation to this last week. And again, just like I did last week, I want to acknowledge and thank all the firefighters who are doing a fantastic job, and all the residents who have suffered in these bushfires, but rest assured that this council continues to make sure we have the most up-to-date planning scheme when it comes to understanding risk of bushfires and their impacts for our communities at risk across the city.
Further speakers? There being none, councillor Burke. I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Hammond, the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee held on Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Hammond, seconded by councillor Richards, with the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated, dated the Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. During committee today, councillor Johnson, who is not here, she's gone home, has asked what the costs of the parks were that were discussed in committee. I'll also follow through that councillor Griffiths is no longer here, who's part of the committee, unfortunately, when he asked questions today, but I will note that councillor Cunningham, councillor Murphy and councillor Richards are all here, present, despite the other councillors going home for an early mark. So, I will say the answers, Wynton Barrack Park Playground, delivered in July 2019, was $500,000. Kangaroo Point River Terrace, again, the Greens councillor has also had a early night tonight, at River Terrace, delivered September 2019, at $643,000. New District Park, Ascot Park, which is an amazing park, and I'm very jealous, councillor McLaughlin, was 4.27 million. Milton Urban Common, delivered October 2019, 1.27 million, I can't wait to see that, councillor Maddick. City Potent Gardens, Hills Avenue Boardwalk, delivered October 2019, 1.75 million. Four-Shore Lighting upgrades, all stages over the last two years, 2.8 million. Sandgate Stage One finished mid-2019, and Stage Two will be early 2020. Winham Four-Shores, councillor Cummings, I know you're excited about that, was mid-20, Stage One, mid-2019, and Stage Two will be delivered late 2019, this year. The West, I just said that, if you're listening, councillor Cummings, and I know my mum always asks about you, it was $2.8 million. So, I'm, I don't, that's a very expensive chicken feed, I would say. West End Riverside Drive Parklands, again, I'm disappointed that the Greens councillor decided to have an early mark when the rest of us are here, that's $2.8 million. So, I will turn around and say, for the Greens councillor who says nothing happens in his ward, I've just said, recently delivered, very recently, September 2019, and now, $643,000 and $2.8 million into the Gabb Ward.
Was it in his newsletter?
Well, probably was, in his newsletter. Three, three questions from the suburban enhancement funds were taken on notice about tree removal, total costs and parking spaces, the answers are as followed. Again, I will say, the two opposition councillors who asked the questions are not in the chamber because they have gone home. The estimated cost of the project is between 1.1 million and 1.2 million. There will be five trees impacted. The car park will formalise 21 car parks that are currently available, and will add an extra three all-ability car parks, and an extra 35 standard bays, so an extra 38 car parks, making it the total of 59 car spaces. I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Hammond? I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Field Services, please.
Well, thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the Field Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Marks, with the report of the Field Services Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Chair, and I'm pleased to say that my entire committee is here, including the two opposition councillors, and I must say that we have, we really enjoy our committee meetings, and last week we had a presentation on National Recycling Week, and it was, it's certainly good to see all of the work that is done by our fantastic officers out there, and I know that, I know that the committee really enjoyed hearing about some of the, some of the things that we might not always know, so if I can encourage everyone in the chamber to go onto Azdeck Docs and have a look at the presentations, because it is good for us to know all of the good work that's being done by our council officers out there for what is a really important week. So National Recycling Week was last, was, as I said, last week, and so we, we had a very interesting presentation that I think everybody enjoyed, so I shall leave it to the chamber for any discussion. Thank you.
Further speakers? Anyone at all? Councillor Howard. I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee, councillor Maddick.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Maddick, seconded by councillor Cunningham, with the report of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Maddick.
Just briefly, Mr Chairman, the committee presentation was actually a tour of the City Hall Henry Willis organ. I'd like to thank the officers for a very informative tour, and for both the great pleasure and the honour of being able to have a look at the various aspects of this wonderful...
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Cumming.
With respect to councillor Maddick, I feel he could speak closer to the microphone and a bit louder, I struggle to hear him from this side of the chamber, and I know he's got a lot of nice things to say, so I would like him to...
Thank you, Mr Chair. Would you mind just speaking up for the benefit of the council? I will, sorry, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Cummings for that. It was actually a very impressive tour by officers of the Henry Willis organ for the whole committee, and I think I could speak for all committee members that it was both a privilege and honour to be able to be taken on a tour, to see the various aspects of the, of all of the sections that make up what we see at the very front of it. It is a very complex piece of machinery, and a real engineering feat, and we were both, I think all of us were in awe at the opportunity to, to be informed of what it was, but also to have the opportunity to participate. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Maddick? I'll put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Finance and Administration Committee report, please. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and Administration Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Murphy, with the report of the Finance and Administration Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before moving to the committee report, I did want to touch briefly upon the item I covered in question time, which was the Greens and Treasury Corporation credit review for council for 2019, a truly outstanding outcome, we have a very high rating, so we have to run pretty fast just to, to maintain that. So importantly, I'd just like to acknowledge the incredibly hard work that's gone in by the corporate finance team. They are a very experienced professional team who, you know, really do the hard yards with the financial management of council, they obviously are instrumental in preparing the budget and supporting the financial management of council during the year, so congratulations to them. The credit review is acknowledgement of the hard work they do. Now, moving on to the Finance and Administration Committee report, we had a really interesting presentation on smart speakers and the trial that we're currently running. Approximately 9% of households have smart speakers, so like Google speakers or Alexa. Now, I've got a couple in my house, a show of hands, how many people in the chamber here have a Google Home or a smart speaker in their home? Okay, so we're overrepresented in the chamber here, so these are great devices, and they've got lots of interesting applications in the home. And in essence, smart speakers are a, an artificial intelligence personal assistance, you effectively give them instructions and, and they respond. They can do all sorts of neat stuff, they can play your playlist, turn your TV on and off, and one of the things that we're looking to do is to leverage this technology to better support the residents of Brisbane. So, we have a, a trial running with the Google Home and Alexa, and in essence, we are providing a suite of Brisbane City Council services. In the trial, we're effectively looking to answer three key questions that we get a lot of, so the three questions that we're trialling are, when are my bins collected? When is curbside collection? And what events are on near me? Now, clearly, the responses, those questions are location-specific, so it's quite technical at the back end to try and make sure that we can provide the right responses to, to residents, so the, the trial to date is going very well. Through the app that supports these particular smart speakers, you're able to set your own information and your location, and accordingly, council can use that information to make sure that it provides you with the right responses to your questions. The, there was some concern potentially about resident data. The important thing to note here is that council will be providing responses to residents based on their questions. We don't hold all the data that the Googles and the Alexas hold of the, on the, on the individual resident, so our actual data holds is extremely low. It is one of these things that we've got a fair bit of work to do on the trial yet, but it's certainly something that will improve efficiency and will provide additional amenity to the residents of Brisbane. At this stage, I'm not sure when the trial will end and what the ultimate outcome will be, but it's certainly something that has the potential to grow. Now, in the committee report, we also had the regular financial report for the period ending September 2019, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Allen? I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I would like to table a petition from a street consultation I did on the weekend for traffic management, and also another petition for traffic management in the ward.
Councillor Cork.
Thank you. I have a petition of some 1,300 residents to fund a village precinct project in Oxford Street, Belimba.
Councillor Cumming.
Yes, two petitions, one in relation to the appeal, in relation to the Billarong Street development, and the other one in relation to the car park and the grounds of Winham Community Centre.
Councillor Murphy.
Yes, Chair, I have a petition calling on council to fund a village precinct project in Amenia Street, Mansfield.
Any others? If my country's have a resolution to adopt those, to accept those, I should say.
Mr Chair, I move that petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Griffiths, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business, councillors, are there any statements required as a result of a councillor conduct review panel order? Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. I rise tonight to speak about community consultation in Figtree Pocket. The Shrinna administration takes community consultation very seriously, and I am very pleased to be able to extend that programme of community consultation into the wonderful suburb of Figtree Pocket. Now, the Lord Mayor has a vision for the kind of Brisbane that we want to create for the future generations, and the Figtree Pocket Vision 2025 project is something that the Walter Taylor Ward Office has worked long and hard with some of the local residents of Figtree Pocket to put together. This involves sending a, excuse me, this involves sending a survey to more than 1,700 households in Figtree Pocket, which is every house in the suburb, and we're basically, excuse me, we're asking all residents of Figtree Pocket to have their say. What do they want to see in their suburb over the next five years? Chair, you may be interested to know that Figtree Pocket has a, excuse me, a drone launching facility. It also has a boat ramp.
Councillors, please.
Figtree Pocket's also home to the very famous Jacaranda Festival down in Miami Yumber Park. What we don't know is what the residents of Figtree Pocket would like to see council do in and around Figtree Pocket over the next five years. So we're asking Figtree Pocket residents to get online and have their say. What would they like to see? Would they like to see expanded bubbler or bottle filling facilities now that people use fewer single-use bottles? Would they like to see more shade facilities in the parks? What would they like to see? Well, Chair, I don't want to presume to know what the people of Figtree Pocket would like to see, but I do know that a lot of people have very strong opinions on footpaths, Chair. Believe it or not, in Figtree Pocket, some people are adamant that we must have footpaths for the kids to get to school, and yet other residents say, do not, under any circumstances, put footpaths in our streets, otherwise we'll lose our country feel. So anyway, Chair, despite the mumblings over there, we will get a good idea of what the people of Figtree Pocket want us to do over the next five years, and we'll put that all together for a concept plan, and we'll be able to roll it out. So Chair, thanks for the opportunity to, to launch the Vision 2025 Plan for Figtree Pocket, and I urge all residents of that beautiful suburb to get on board and let council know what they need and want.
Thank you, councillor Mackay. Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to speak on a couple of events that's happened recently and one observation, I'll, I think I'll take care of the observation first, if I might, and that was the, the address that councillor Hemmott made in regards to people that weren't in the chamber, had gone home. Now, I don't know if she actually, I don't think she obviously knows where the two councillors that she targeted had gone, but I did know, I did have, I did check with our councillor for Tennyson, and she had to undertake a community event tonight, and adjudicate, adjudicate that event as well. So, I mean, from time to time, councillors have to, have to leave the chamber to attend events which are important to their constituents.
Point of order? Councillor Strunk, take a question?
Absolutely.
What council, what community events did you miss tonight, councillor Strunk, for being here in chambers after dinner?
Okay, well, I actually, I didn't have any tonight after, but I did have one last week, and I left before the chamber rose, with permission from my leader, because I had an event, an important event I had to attend. So anyways, I mean, the Lord Mayor's not in the chamber here, and I know he's got a very busy schedule, so sometimes he can't be in, so I think to actually cast dispersions on other councillors on this side, because they have had to leave the chamber for whatever reason.
Sorry, councillor Strunk, just one moment, please. Can we have a little bit of silence while councillor Strunk is speaking, please? Councillor Cummings, I'm talking about your side of the chamber? Yes, thank you. Councillor Strunk, please continue.
Thank you. So I, I just think it's a bit purile when we do this, whichever side does it.
Pural.
Pural. Look it up. I'm sure you've all had well-educated lives, so you know what that means, of course. Anyways, that, that's the observation in regards to positively about the two events that have happened recently. Last, last week we had, or on the 8th, actually, we had a night of dance at the new Performing Arts Centre at Forest Lake High School. They gave it a bit of a trial run, the official opening is not until this Friday, but I was able to go along and watch some unbelievable performances in this fantastic new arena, the Performing Arts Centre at Forest Lake High School, which Education Queensland has just built over the last nine months. And I tell you what, I, I've been into a lot of auditoriums and concert areas and things like that, and I think the sound in this one is fantastic. No matter where you are in the, in the auditorium, the sound is crystal clear, and, and of course, you know, it's right up to date and all the rest of it, so other, other venues, of course, go back a few years when they were built, and maybe some of the new technologies weren't available to them then. But anyways, it was fantastic. It has retractable seating, which allows them to do, to have four classrooms through the, through the school day as well. So it's a great piece of engineering and a great piece of work in regards to the sound, fantastic, and of course, the talent, they went through about 22 performances within about a two-hour performance time, and they, it was just, this was the trial run, and it was just seamless. It was quite incredible, and the students did it all themselves, which is unbelievably fantastic. The, the last, it was last Sunday, the Serbian community descended on Forest Lake and St. John's College Performing Arts Centre. We had acts right up from Adelaide up to, up to Brisbane, and the Serbian community, which is represented in my area, by the, my area, by the Serbian church, do a fantastic, do a fantastic job within my community, and of course, it's now going to be councillor Burke's community, or a part of his community after March 28th, so you're very lucky to have them because they do great work right across Brisbane, whether it be from West End through to, to my space currently. The entertainment was, was probably as good as you'll ever see in any, because I think it was quite professional in, in the way they undertook what they did. They called it a concert, but there was more dancing than singing, but, but all of it was very good, and they filled the whole arena at St. John's, which will take, I don't know, 650, 700 people, and it was, it was chalk the block. So I just congratulate Stevo and the local Serbian church out my way, and being able to facilitate that. Thank you very much, Mr Chair.
Thanks, councillor Strunk. Further speakers? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. I rise tonight to speak about Brisbane being on the international stage, and also some local ward matters. Can I start first by referring to all of the year 12 students in my ward who have graduated in the last week or so? It has been wonderful to get to know these year 12 students over the past 12 years whilst I've been a councillor, and I have seen many of them grow up and start their school life and now finish their school life, and it is wonderful to see these young adults... And it is wonderful to see these young adults grow from young children to being valued members of our community. And can I say that there are so many of them that are doing so many wonderful things, it would take me months to actually reflect on it. But I do wish them all well in their future chosen careers, and I know that they will be the future leaders of our city, our state and our nation. Can I also acknowledge locally the official opening of Hilton Food Groups in Heathwood? And for those of you who haven't heard of Hilton Food Groups, they are an international organisation, they are really at the cutting edge of a lot of innovation. They have invested over two-hundred-and-eighty million dollars on their Heathwood facility. This has generated six-hundred-and-fifty jobs locally, which is a fantastic outcome, not only for our city, but also for many local people. And on touring the whole operation last week, it is interesting to see how they have upscaled the logistics to a very, very innovative process. And the quality control, particularly with meat processing, having been in that industry many, many years ago, seeing where it's come from to where it is today in this particular facility is absolutely fantastic. The whole process that they, that goes from the paddock to the plate, using their joint venture operations that they have in conjunction with Woolworths, it is amazing. And being very, very passionate about Brisbane as well, part of the Hilton Food Groups incorporates a fish processing factory in my hometown in England, so I did say to them that because we're also a port city, a river city, maybe they should look at investing in some seafood processing here as well. So there could be another operation that's coming to our fair city in the years to come. They were also recognised as part of the Lord Mayor's Business Awards this year as well. And this is what happens when people actually have faith in us as a city, have faith in us as an economic driver, and they recognise the opportunities that are here in Brisbane. And what they're doing across the world is amazing. And one thing that they align with our city so well with is the fact that they have been developing fully recycled and recyclable packaging for meat, which is an incredibly different, difficult product to have recyclables involved in, particularly with the food safety standards and the food preservation requirements. So hats off to all of the staff at Hilton Foods. You made everybody feel welcome, and it was a privilege to be there on behalf of the Lord Mayor for the official opening last week. I have also had the privilege of being able to launch an international art exhibition. And I do want to acknowledge one of my constituents who is a master artist, and particularly Master Zhang Yu, who is currently the chairman of the Australia Chinese International Cultural and Art Exhibition, sorry, Art Education Exchange Promotion Association. He's also a visiting professor of Chengdu University in China. Now, this art exhibition is very, very important, because when you actually get four master artists in traditional Chinese art, to get them to come together to collaborate for a whole exhibition is quite an intensive process. Just the sheer development of the exhibition of their artwork for each artist alone is very time-consuming. And when you get an appreciation for the artwork, it is phenomenal. So it was my privilege to say, Wan Hang Rong Xing, Hu Da Jiao Jiao, Is Xi San Jian, Qing Tian, Jing Ti Du Jian Lan. And that means that it was a privilege to join them all for the launch of a wonderful exhibition of art and talent. Now, we weren't there long enough to buy a lot of art, but what I have, and councillor Wong was with me for the launch of the actual books of the four master artists. And the reason I bring this to the chamber tonight is because Brisbane City Hall features in this art exhibition. So this is Brisbane City Hall alive and at night, and also we have Brisbane City Hall by day, and also Queensland University and our featured Jacarandas. So I know how passionate some of us are in our city about our Jacarandas. So we had four master artists, and can I say that out of this art exhibition, Brisbane City Hall is now being considered as a future, a future feature at the Harbin Ice Festival and in Harbin in China, which attracts one million visitors. So just to give people an example of how significant this is, it is a major, major process. The ice sculptures, because of the weather in Harbin in China, it is so cold that they do the ice sculptures and they last for a month. So people can start visiting around about the fifth of January, and it goes for a month. And we're not talking about little ice sculptures that you might see on a table. We are talking about workers using a machine to cut large blocks of ice out of the frozen Songhua River, and those team of workers, they pull large blocks of ice, and there would be nearly two-hundred-thousand cubic metres of ice that is taken to the site. And each block of ice weighs about seven-hundred kilograms. So these ice sculptures are absolutely magnificent and absolutely significant when we're talking about the future potential for Brisbane City Hall to feature in this. And that was a discussion I had with a former councillor and representative of Harbin, who I had the pleasure to meet. And I would like to extend a special thank you to the Guangdong Artist Associations and particularly Ms Wong Shao, who's the secretary of the members' group. And her support of these artists displaying their artwork is greatly appreciated. So we had a number of hosts that coordinated with this international exhibition. That was the Guangdong Artist Association, the Sichuan Artist Association, Liaoning Artist Association, the Ha Long Jan Artist Association, and of course, our very own Australia-China Association for the promotion of international culture, art and education. So we had the four master artists, and I do want to put on the public record a very big thank you for them, for the work that they do to not only perpetuate their traditional craft themselves, but to be teachers, to associate with universities, and to also pass their skills on and create that legacy for the future. So I would like to acknowledge Master Gong Ye, Master Li Minghei, Master Kwong Wei Guang, and Master Kwong Ming Hui. These wonderful and esteemed artists not only dedicate themselves to perfecting their own specialty in art, but have also supported many, many younger students and nurtured them in developing their talent. So to have a wonderful master artist like Master Wong Ye living in my community, it is a privilege to know him. He's made a major impact in the relationship between Australia and China, particularly in fostering art, but also he contributes to building the exchange channels for the cultural and arts field. So I would like to say to any councillors here tonight, if you would like to look at some of these beautiful artworks, we do, councillor Wong and I both have copies of their artwork. It is wonderful to see the depth of talent that is within this artwork. The books are only a small snapshot of what the art is in reality.
Councillor Owen, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further speakers? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on an event that was held in my ward, not last weekend, the weekend before, on the Saturday, but it is the month, basically, the anniversary of the Malkavat Men's Shed. I'm a very, very proud co-founder of the Malkavat Men's Shed that now has, I think they've had eight hundred pass through their doors as members over the last ten years, currently at around the three-hundred mark. They have done an absolute amazing amount of work in the Malkavat community. It started with a few of us having the same idea at the same time, so I called a meeting ten years ago. And at that meeting, I was surprised to find the Malkavat Community Centre, that we had about twenty-five gentlemen that turned up, all keen, from all different churches, different multicultural backgrounds, different community groups, keen to get involved in a men's shed for the local area. So it was literally, and I, it was literally a matter of see a need, fill a need, and these men got on and did it. We took a few years to actually get the shed, but that's, we know, in your local area, if you don't have a shed, that's how it works. They met in my office every month on a Wednesday afternoon, which was supposed to be for a couple of hours, I think it went for five hours, and we eventually had to chuck them out, and then they'd stand on the street side and talk until seven o'clock to get everything done. They were enthusiastic, they were amazing, and to celebrate ten years with them, ten days ago, was absolutely amazing. Again, well over five hundred people turned up at the open day, it was a wonderful celebration. There's a book to commemorate it, which brought back some absolutely wonderful memories. I can't go without saying, congratulations to the very original instigators Patty, who no longer lives in the Malkavat area, is down at Winham, councillor Cumming, but came back for the event last weekend. He wheeled into my ward office ten years ago, saying, I need somewhere to meet with men of my own age, and he was the one for me that got it started. But Mr Brian Wheeler, Keith Samuels, and of course, Vale Bob Pope, or Bob the Builder, as we called him, because he built the shed as well. There is now over twenty-seven activities that are held there, everything from what began as woodwork to now caricature, music, health and activities. It is absolutely fantastic, I am so proud. Well done to all of the men in my area. And as I say to them regularly, if there's three hundred happy men in the men's shed, there's nearly as many of that happy women at home, not having to put up with them. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak very briefly about council's recent City of Lights project that was undertaken in my ward. I love Stone's Corner, and with access to high-frequency public transport and increasing local population, the revitalisation of Hanlon Park and new businesses opening, it has a bright future. Earlier this month, I was pleased to join with local traders and other members of my community to officially switch on the lights that now feature in a magnificent fig tree out the front of Stone's Corner Library on Logan Road. This project, combined with the soon-to-be-completed renovation of the library, has given the area a lift. It's created a gateway and it draws in visitors. It's created a more vibrant and pleasant backdrop for visitors to enjoy this emerging night-time scene. When I meet with traders and those who work in retail and hospitality, they've told me that times have been tough lately, and that's true right across Queensland. But business confidence is returning to the village of Stone's Corner, which has welcomed more shops and services in the last few months. The area has a growing reputation for health, fitness and beauty services, combined with an emerging foodie and bar scene. With more people expected to be moving into the area, I know this precinct will only continue to grow in coming years. Chair, I want to, deputy chair rather, I want to take the opportunity to thank the traders who form part of our Stone's Corner, the local business association. These hard-working people get up, turn up, and all contribute to the local economy, helping make our community a great place to live. A longstanding business owner at Stone's Corner told me that the current occupancy rates are the highest they've seen in years. It has been a pleasure to work with these traders on this lighting project, and I will continue to work with them to find ways that council can support our local economy and create more local jobs. Finally, I want to thank the Lord Mayor and the Chair, councillor Burke, for working with me on this, and the council officers who made this vision become a reality. I'm proud to be part of a council team that supports local traders and the economy and is creating more to see and do.
Any further speakers? There being no one rising, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you.